Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mark. Roll call, please.
Mayor Griffin?
Here.
Councilmember Wertz?
Here.
Councilmember Gibbons?
Here.
Councilmember Sears?
Here.
Councilmember Dewey?
Here.
Councilmember Zimmer?
Here.
Councilmember Ward?
Here.
Thank you. And City Attorney Hessel, would you like to read a comment about the sunshine law? So it's recorded in the minutes, please.
Mayor, Section 610.015 of the Missouri Sunshine Law, if members of the council are not physically present in the council chambers and participate and vote on all matters when an emergency exists in the nature of the emergency must be stated in the minutes. So I would ask that the minutes reflected, unfortunately, we are still in this state of emergency with the coronavirus or known as COVID-19. The city council is meeting remotely for the safety of each other as well as for the general public.
Thank you, John. We have one presentation tonight, and if everyone looks at the background on Councilmember Ward's screen, you can tell what an important recognition we have. So I'm going to read a proclamation this evening. Whereas 172 years ago, in 1848, the first Women's Rights Convention was held in Seneca Falls, New York, marking the beginning of the bold and outrageous women's rights movement to gain women the vote. The women's right movement, as well as every other progressive social change movement, was made stronger by the women of Missouri from every race, class, and ethnic background who served on the front line and ultimately played a unique and critical role in Missouri's history. On June 4, 1919, the United States Congress passed the 19th Amendment to the United States Constitution, providing the vote for women and sent it to the states for ratification. On July 3, 1919, Governor Frederick Gardner signed the bill that made Missouri the 11th state to ratify the 19th Amendment. And 100 years ago, on August 26, 1920, the 19th Amendment was certified by the United States Secretary of State Bainbridge Colby and became federal law. The city of Kirkwood recognizes that the American Association of University Women, founded in 1881, and its Missouri branches have long been supporters of women's rights, equity, and the 19th Amendment. And the citizens of Kirkwood appreciate the struggles of the suffragists and others who fought for the right to vote by all citizens. Now, therefore, I, Timothy E. Griffin, Mayor of the city of Kirkwood, on behalf of the Kirkwood City Council, do hereby recognize the 100th anniversary of the ratification of the 19th Amendment and proclaim that August 26, 2020, is recognized as the centennial of the 19th Amendment Celebration Day in the city of Kirkwood. So a very historic moment to recognize.
You're here.
All right. We'll move on now. We have three public hearings this evening regarding taxes. The first is establishing the tax rates for the city of Kirkwood. Mr. Hessel, do you wish to enter any exhibits into the record?
I would, Mayor. I would offer as Exhibit 1, the affidavit of publication verifying the notice of this public hearing appeared in the St. Louis County and let the record reflect that the notice did identify the appropriate assessed valuation information, including the previous year, meaning 2019 assessed evaluation, as well as the current year, 2020's current year valuation as well. Exhibit 2 is an affidavit of publication verifying the notice of the public hearing appeared in the legal ledger. Again, all the appropriate information contained within that notice. Exhibit 3 is code of ordinances of the city of Kirkwood.
Thank you, John. Mr. Hessel?
Okay. The Director of Finance, Sandy Stevens, will be presenting.
Great. Welcome, Sandy.
Good evening, Mayor and the board, our council. Tonight's, first, I'd like to start out by reviewing the, this is not an assessment year. It's an even number year. And the residential assessments increased 1.8%. And some of the things that would affect that would be protested property taxes that were resolved and new construction from the previous year. The residential assessed value is 19% of the appraised value. And our commercial assessments increased less than five, or half a percent. And the commercial assessed value is 32% of the appraised value. Now, when calculating the proposed property tax rates, the cities, the taxing authorities are only allowed to capture revenue at the same level as the previous year, adjusted for the CPI, which this year, the state auditor's office has a CPI at 2.3%. And all the property tax rates, proposed tax rates are calculated and reviewed by the Missouri State Auditor's Office. The city levels property tax for the police and fire pension, the parks, and the general government services, which includes our public safety. The residential proposed rate is 49.5 cents per hundred of assessed value and includes the proposed voluntary reversal for the general government services. If council does not pass the reversal, then that would be adjusted accordingly. The proposed tax levy would increase the property tax bill about $18 on a home that's valued at $300,000 or $6 per each $100,000 of assessed valuation. The commercial proposed rate is 55 cents per hundred of assessed value. And personal property proposed rate is 63.9 cents per hundred of assessed value. Now, our special business district only levels the tax on the commercial businesses within that district, and their assessment increased less than a half a percent as well, with the proposed rate being 38.1 cents per hundred of assessed value. And it remains exactly the same as the previous year. Are there any questions from council?
All right. We have any council questions? I can go down the list or somebody wants to just raise his or her hand? All right. Oh, Councilmember Gibbons?
I know that you talked to the auditor's office, and I'm looking at the pro forma right now. So I just, and I know you understand this, but just so you could clear it up for me, the amount of rate increase authorized by voters for the current year, number B on the auditor's pro forma. So it was .1070 for prior year, current year .1070. And then the amount of rate increase authorized by the voters is 000. So I just want to make sure we all understand.
Excuse me, what page are you looking at? Are you looking at the parks and recs? You said point?
No, I'm looking at the city of Kirkwood. Yeah, Parks and Rec. I'm sorry, it is. The pro forma for Parks and Rec.
Right. That one is not the one that the voluntary reversal in the third public hearing will be addressing. It is addressing the one that, if you flip over to the two pages, it says general revenue.
Okay.
Okay, now, if you look at it, at the bottom line, well, first of all, the line right above it, the voters approved 34 cents. And so now, adjusted for time and the amount of revenue, that same voter approval is now the equivalent of 27.1 cents per hundred of assessed valuation. So that's one of the things that the state auditor does before they will approve this, is they monitor and make sure that no taxing authority is receiving more revenue than they need or have some kind of windfall based on changes in assessed values. But they do have some kind of CPI clause in each year. Does that help?
I guess so. I just wish they didn't have the 000 on the amount of rate of increase authorized by voters for the current year. That's what's confusing.
Now, you're looking at the pro forma sheets. Are you looking under agricultural?
I'm looking at general revenue.
Because, see, we?
No, I'm looking at residential.
Okay. Oh, I see where you're, I see where you're seeing on that line C.
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 Yeah, I can't answer why their form has that on there.
That comes from the auditor, correct?
Yes. What happens is we take?
State auditor form.
Go ahead, Sandy.
What we, once St. Louis County provides us with the assessed valuations, we log into the state auditor's website. And the only thing that we do is we put in what those assessed valuations are. The state auditor's office runs all the calculations and reviews the rates. Then they send back what they are approving as the maximum that the cities can, or any taxing authority can levy.
And that appears to be if there was a tax increase also authorized by the voters of this particular year and that did not happen.
Correct.
Yeah. Any other questions from council? All right, thank you. Do we have anyone wishing to speak on this or make a comment on this? All right. Seeing none, this public hearing is now closed, and the item will be on our new business agenda on September 3. All right. Now we'll go to our second public hearing, establishing the property tax rates for the Kirkwood Municipal Library. Mr. Hessel, do you wish to enter any exhibits into the record?
I would, Mayor. Again, I would offer as Exhibit 1, an affidavit of publication verifying the notice of this public hearing here in St. Louis County. Again, the relevant information associated with the associate, the assessed valuation for the 2019 prior year's valuation, as well as the 2020 current year's valuation was set forth in the notice. Exhibit 2 is the affidavit of publication verifying the notice of this public hearing appeared in the legal ledger. Again, all the appropriate and relevant information was contained in that notice of public hearing. Exhibit 3 is the code of ordinances of the city.
Thank you, John. Mr. Hawes, I assume Finance Director Stevens will present this to the council as well?
You would assume correctly.
Great. Thank you. Go ahead, Sandy. Thank you.
Okay. Now, the proposed rates we're discussing now are from the library. And their residential assessed values increased less than 1%. And some of the, one of the questions that people have is, why isn't it the same as the city of Kirkwood? But the library has different taxing boundaries than the city of Kirkwood. So that's where your differences in the assessed valuation comes in. The commercial assessment decreased less than a half of a percent. The same procedures are followed in determining the proposed rates. And the residential rates proposed are 24.6% per hundred of assessed value. And the commercial proposed rate is 28.6 cents per hundred of assessed value. And the personal property tax is 35.5 cents per hundred of assessed value. The library uses the funding for this revenue source to not only service the debt on the renovations that were made, but for their wonderful programs that they have, which I wouldn't do justice trying to tell you all of them. But are there any questions on the library?
Council, any questions on the library?
Oh, thank you.
All right. Seeing none, do we have anyone wishing to ask questions from our audience? All right. Seeing none, then this public hearing is closed, and this item will be on our new business agenda on September 3. And then our final public hearing, reversal of voluntary reduction in property tax rates to the voter-approved level. Mr. Hessel, do you wish to enter any exhibits into the record?
I would, Mayor. Again, Exhibit 1 is an affidavit of publication verifying this public hearing appeared in the St. Louis County. And that notice of public hearing did, in fact, contain the relevant information associated with the reverse voluntary reduction rates, or the residential, commercial, personal. Exhibit 2 is the affidavit of publication verifying this public hearing appeared in the legal ledger. Again, the relevant information was contained in that public notice appearing as well. Exhibit 3 is code of ordinances of the city of Kirkwood.
Thank you, John. And again, Russ, I assume Sandy will make this presentation?
It will be Sandy.
All right, Sandy.
Okay. As everyone knows, that the voters back in 2008 approved 34 cents per hundred of assessed valuation. And the city chose to take a voluntary reduction. And now that the city, the general fund is now experiencing some declining revenue streams, we feel that it is prudent that the city reversed the voluntary reduction to help mitigate the effect of these declining revenue streams. The reduction, voluntary reversal, will add approximately 359,160 annually to the general fund that is desperately needed at this time. Staff recommends to city council the reversal of this reduction in general government service property tax. And if approved, it would add about $6 per 100,000 of valuation. Or, as I said in the previous public hearing, on a home valued at $300,000, it would increase approximately $18. The taxing authorities are authorized to adjust taxes to voter-approved levels in even number of years only. So this year is the opportunity that Kirkwood has, and the next opportunity would be in '22. And the state auditor allows this action to be done through a resolution of the city council. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Sandy. We have any council questions on this public hearing? I see one. Councilmember Sears.
I don't mean to get too far down in the weeds on this, but just quickly overview. How does it work when we have this, we have the Hancock limitation on the increase? And so we're doing the voluntary, reversing the voluntary rollback? And values have increased, property values? So how does that? Do that, we just submit it all, and then the state figures it out? How do we, how is that adjusted to make sure we don't go over the Hancock?
That was on that, that was on that pro forma sheet attached to the first public hearing. They have already, what happened is when the voters approved the 34 cents, I believe it was expected to generate like $2.3 million in revenue. So what the state auditor does is takes that voter-approved level of revenue, and then they do the calculations based on the assessed values and the CPI. And what happens is then you don't see that rapid growth. That's why the rates aren't up at 34 cents. They're at 27.1% because they are monitoring the level of revenue that these rate, proposed rates are going to generate, not the rate itself.
Okay, so what happens if we do not approve the reversal? You said earlier that that, things will be adjusted accordingly?
Right. So instead of the 27.1 cents, it would go back down to the, hang on, I've got it here somewhere. But I think it was 24, I forget what the decimal point is, but it would go back down to that approved rate of 24 point, I'm sorry, I don't have that in front of me.
It would drop by 3.2, it would drop by 3.2 cents. It would just continue on as where we are. I mean, not as where we are, but it would be where we would have been had we not reversed it.
Correct.
All right. Anything else from council? All right. Seeing none, do we have any, anyone in our virtual audience who wishes to make a comment or ask a question? All right. Seeing none, this public hearing is closed, and this item will also be on our new business agenda on September 3. Now we will go to the public comments portion of our meeting.
Yes, the public comments portion of the meeting is an opportunity for the city council to listen to comments from citizens. It is not a question and answer session, and the city council will not respond to comments or answer questions during this period. The mayor may refer any matter brought up to the city council to the chief administrative officer or city clerk if action is needed.
All right. Laurie, I know you have two that you'd like to read. Why don't you go ahead and read now?
Well, one of, one of the two may possibly be online. I want to, I want to see, to see if they were able to make it online. If not, I'll read their comments.
Okay. All right. Do we have anyone who is attending virtually who wishes to make a comment? All right.
Okay.
All right.
There's one. There's one.
One hand raised.
One.
Okay.
And they are unmuted.
Hi, this is Krista, the director at the Public Library. Just wanted to thank you all for your support very much for the library. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Krista.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Hi, Laurie.
Okay. The first email I have that I would like to read in the record is from Patrick Richmond at 444 North Clay Avenue. Patrick wrote, "The Grants Trail is really a form of recycling the Crondalot Branch of the former Missouri Pacific Railroad Line, which now Missouri Pacific, is owned by Union Pacific. The trail starts at the Kirkwood Trailhead located at Luffingwell and Homes. It provides a good connection with the city of Crestwood, Grants Farm, and is now a direct link to the Republic Services Recycling Facility in LeMay, Missouri. On the trail, there is even a wall where you can place your arms through to deposit recyclables while enjoying your journey on the trail. Current options for the trail is to go via the sidewalks of the streets in Kirkwood's historic neighborhoods. The other option was to follow the remainder of the Kirkwood portion of the Crondalot Branch of the Union Pacific Line. I think following the rest of the old branch line track is much more useful since it is more direct into downtown Kirkwood. There is one thing that could be done if the rail route is selected. That is, over by Fillmore and Monroe is a coffee factory, and that could also be used as a place to open a small restaurant for the trail users so they can get their morning cup of coffee before they start their journey on the trail. Also near that section, we should have an electronics recycling facility so that people using the trail can also get rid of old electronics and use batteries. To have the trail cross from the old Frisco tracks, I would love to see a pedestrian tunnel go under the tracks." Oh, Freddie, we can hear you. Oh, Freddie, we can hear you.
Okay, go ahead Laurie.
All right, the other comment I have emailed, like to read into the record is from Michael Carmody at 352 Wind Grove Road on behalf of Safer Streets for Kirkwood. Mr. Carmody wrote from Kirkwood's website, "Focus on pedestrian safety takes priority in Kirkwood. The city of Kirkwood is a walkable, bikeable community where pedestrian safety takes priority. City council and city staff have been proactive in researching and planning ways to keep pedestrians, cyclists, and motorists all safe while they navigate the city and its neighborhoods. Report on this past Wednesday, August 19th, 2020, a virtual meeting was held to review the many dangers of the Big Ben corridor within Kirkwood city limits. The meeting was requested by Safer Streets for Kirkwood. It was well represented with over 25 government officials at the meeting. This meeting was facilitated by the Federal Highway Administration. Six officials from across the country, all experts in transportation safety. The Federal Highway Administration supports state and local governments in the design, construction, and maintenance of the nation's highway system. These folks have been engaged with Safer Streets for Kirkwood, providing Transportation Safety Council of our efforts to bring forth safer streets in Kirkwood. Attendees included, MoDOT's district engineer and six specialists participated. MoDOT has worked with Safer Streets for Kirkwood incorporating safety enhancements on Phase Two Manchester Road. MoDOT is also overseeing the upcoming South Kirkwood Road maintenance pavement overlay that will include new additional safety enhancements. MoDOT's stated mission is to provide a world-class transportation system that is safe, innovative, reliable, and dedicated to a prosperous Missouri. Also in attendance was Trailnet CEO, who is one of the key entities working on St. Louis County's bike-walk plan. Trailnet has worked with Safer Streets of Kirkwood for a number of years, providing counsel on best safety practices for walking and biking. Also in attendance was East West Gateway Council of Government, Senior Manager of Transportation Planning and Programming, and two other officials, originally charged with coordinating transportation funding for St. Louis region, regional projects. East West Gateway's purview has expanded through the years to bring together governmental officials, planning professionals, citizens, and private sector partners to develop regional and local plans for transportation, environmental quality, housing, emergency preparedness, and access to employment. East West Gateway has a good supporting working relationship with Safer Streets for Kirkwood. Also in attendance was St. Louis Councilman Fitch, who was traveling, but his executive assistant participated and immediately after the meeting communicated a report to Councilman Fitch. Councilman Fitch has met with Safer Streets for Kirkwood in the past and has been very supportive of our safety endeavors. He has also, he also has stated communication from Kirkwood officials in the form of a resolution or written statement requesting safety enhancements on St. Louis County maintained roads inside of Kirkwood, of Kirkwood as needed. St. Louis County's Director of Transportation and Public Works, along with seven other key officials, were also in attendance. Dr. Page and his St. Louis County Executive staff has met with Safer Streets for Kirkwood this past spring to discuss safety enhancement opportunities in the Big Ben corridor. That meeting was productive and a notice was given to Kirkwood officials. The city of Kirkwood needed to express to St. Louis County's officials' desire for our suggested safety enhancements, all of which are embraced by the FHWA. The city of Kirkwood had four council members in attendance, along with two staff members, who are involved with Kirkwood Streets Department. A clear position of Kirkwood's safety programs was not communicated by Kirkwood officials during this meeting. Please communicate to Dr. Page, the St. Louis County Executive, Kirkwood's resolve to improve transportation safety for all users. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you. All right. With that, we will move on to our consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
All right, you have?
Yep.
Is that Laurie?
Yep, I got that.
All right, any questions or comment on the consent agenda? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, motion passes. We'll go on to unfinished business, Bill 10840.
Mayor and council, this is an ordinance re-adopting a procedure to disclose potential conflicts of interest and substantial interests for certain officials as set forth in Chapter 2, Article 1, Section 2 through 5, or 2-5 of the Kirkwood Code of Ordinances.
Any questions or comments? All right, seeing none, roll call, please.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
Councilmember Wirths?
Yes.
Councilmember Gibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Sears?
Yes.
Councilmember Dewey?
Yes.
Councilmember Zimmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Bill passes, Bill 10841.
Mayor and council, this is an ordinance amending the Kirkwood Code of Ordinances, Chapter 14, Article 8, Section 14-396, Schedule F, Speed Limit Designation, Subsection F, School Speed Limits, by adding Simmons at Charlene to the North City Limits, Folger at Charlene to the North City Limits, and Belva Avenue.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
Councilmember Wirths?
Yes.
Councilmember Gibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Sears?
Yes.
Councilmember Dewey?
Yes.
Councilmember Zimmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Bill passes, Bill 10842.
Mayor and council, this is an ordinance amending the Kirkwood Code of Ordinances, Chapter 14, Article 8, Section 14-398, Roots on Which Operation of Commercial Vehicles Restricted, by adding the 100 and 200 blocks of East Clinton.
Are there any questions or comments?
Yes, I'm wondering-
Oh Liz, she said Liz, okay.
Yes, I'm just wondering why, why this all came up? And how are deliveries going to be made to the Bethesda facility? Is it Kirkwood House is also on the corner there?
I can answer in generalities to those questions. Bill is not on this meeting right now. He's more familiar with the specifics and I'm sure he'd be glad to answer your question, Ms. Gibbons, at any future time. But in generalities, commercial vehicles prohibited does not mean that you can't have some short visits for the purpose of delivery or something along those lines. It's intended to not have cut-through traffic as much as anything and to limit the amount of commercial activity on, on minor roads. And that East Clinton is a minor road, no doubt. So that's a general, a general statement about the purpose here.
And will there be signs that will say, "No trucks allowed" or, how do you, how does somebody know that it's designated that?
Typically, there is, typically, there is a sign that says, "No trucks."
Yeah, there's an example of that on South Guyer, if you want to see one.
South Guyer, there's Harrison, yep.
And so this came about because we, there's, it's been noted that there's a problem with trucks going, trying to go that way that aren't delivering?
As I say, I can't speak to the specifics of the impetus for this action because I'm not familiar with the impetus. But it was decided through the SCIT team and SCIT normally reviews complaints. SCIT normally is brought into a situation, SCIT being the Street Codes Investigation Team. They normally will review for engineering purposes and safety purposes complaints and recommend based on engineering analysis and environmental factors specific to a location, whether there should be action taken and then recommend that to city council. This is a recommendation of the SCIT team.
Could I, I thought I had seen this on the legislative request attached to the proposal here. It, it goes into some detail about the impetus and purposes for it. In that case, it said there's been accidents with tractor-trailers.
Liz, you may have recognized that committee previously as the Traffic Committee. So we've changed the name on it.
All right, do we have any other council comments or questions? All right, seeing none, roll call, please.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
Councilmember Wirths?
Yes.
Councilmember Gibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Sears?
Yes.
Councilmember Dewey?
Yes.
Councilmember Zimmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Bill passes, go to new business, Bill 10843.
Mayor and council, this is an ordinance amending and re-adopting the provisions of Appendix E, Personnel Rules and Regulations of the Kirkwood Code of Ordinances.
Is there a motion for approval?
Approve.
All right, you've got that Laurie?
Yep, I do.
All right, we have any questions or comments on this? All right, seeing none, all in favor of first reading approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passes. All right. We have no consent agenda items. We'll go to city council reports. I have just two quick items. The other day, as we do every year, we received a check from Bethesda Gardens in the amount of $6,233.35. They make a contribution every year to us. It's a voluntary contribution to help defray the cost of the emergency services that the residents there receive. It's very, very much appreciated. We thank them for that. And the other thing, just wanted to note, and the city has publicized it, as has the county, there's a pop-up COVID testing at North Kirkwood Middle School this Saturday and Sunday from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. An appointment is needed, so for anyone who's interested, the website you can go to is STLcorona.com. That's part of St. Louis County. They're very clear that an appointment is needed, so StLouisCorona.com. That's all I have. Any other council comments or just?
I've got one here, Tim. The mayor froze.
Go ahead.
Okay, you know, since the, the library was, was on the agenda earlier in the hearing, I wanted to urge council members to go to their website. The, the staff and the board, they're doing great work with keeping services available under these restricted circumstances. And there are a lot of things that they're offering, and they're one of the few libraries, public libraries, that are offering some Sunday hour services too. So that becomes even more important next week when most of our kids get back to virtual school.
Thank you. Yeah, Maggie?
I just want to second what, what Wallace said. They're, they're amazing. They're doing a great job. So thank you to our library and all the librarians.
I apologize, I think I froze up for a second.
I thought it was because I raised my hand, Tim.
No, I don't know what's going on. I've frozen up three or four times tonight.
We didn't notice.
That's good. I do, because when you freeze up, you know, you're the only one moving, talking, what's going on? Looks kind of, looks kind of goofy, but yeah. Administrative Officer Report.
I don't have any report right now, Mayor, thank you.
The Attorney Report.
I'm happy to report that I have nothing to report.
That's always, that's always good.
Thanks, John.
Yes, Your Honor, I have a few things to report. The first item is the report of the August 19th meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. The following action was taken. After a presentation for a request for a site plan review for a 12-unit, four-story residential building on the combined properties of 134 and 138 West Madison Avenue, Commissioners Evans and Finder were appointed to a subcommittee. The subcommittee will meet via Zoom on August 27th at 8:45 a.m. I also like to report on the upcoming public hearings that we have scheduled. The first ones will be for September 3rd. We'll have two public hearings that evening. The first one is a request for a zoning code text amendment, site plan review, and two lot commercial subdivision for Commerce Bank at 300 North Kirkwood Road. And the second one is a request for a special use permit for a physical fitness facility known as River North Strength in Suites A and B at 10505 Big Ben Boulevard. And Mayor, would you like me to kind of?
Yes, please, please clarify what the first public hearing next week is because I know there's some confusion on what actually is going to be heard that night.
Yes, this is a statement from Planning and Development Services Director Jonathan Raich that most of the city council has already received. The recent email input that the council has been receiving regarding the Commerce Bank site generally focuses on the PZ-28-20 application, which is currently proposed as a five-story mixed-use project that includes a commercial first floor and a mixture of independent living and assisted living residential units in floors two through five. The OPUS project, PZ-28-20, is still under review and consideration by the Planning and Zoning Commission Subcommittee that was assigned. This application is not under consideration at the September 3rd public hearing. The application, which is under consideration at the September 3rd public hearing, was submitted by Commerce Bank, PZ-27-20, which involves three parts. One, a two-lot commercial subdivision of the existing property. Two, a text amendment regarding street frontage occupat- occupantation, occupa- excuse me, I can't speak this evening, occupation in downtown. And three, a site plan review for approximately 3,800 square feet one-story bank building for Commerce Bank on the northern lot of the proposed two-lot subdivision. While PZ-27-20, which is the item that will be on the September 3rd public hearing, includes a request to subdivide the commercial property that would potentially make way for the OPUS project. It does not imply any approval of that separate project. So I think that kind of gives a explanation of what that public hearing on September 3rd will actually be about. Then the other item we have scheduled for public hearing is an item rescheduled from August 27th. We have, have rescheduled it to October 22nd, 2020, which is a request for a mixed-use development in the B2 zoning district known as the James, formerly Kirkwood Flats, at 426 North Kirkwood Road. And that's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Laurie. With that, the next meeting is city council will be two weeks from tonight, 7:00 p.m., September 3rd, via Zoom, and with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.